Meeting is called to order at 7:05 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, before we begin, I have a statement. Good evening. As you are aware, we are now in our second week of school closure as we deal with this unprecedented health crisis. On behalf of the Board of Education, I want our families and our community to know that we are here for you and will offer you as much support as we can. It's important in these difficult times that we come together and help one another through the many challenges ahead. We are very proud of Team Penfield and want to thank our incredible administrators, faculty, and staff for working together to provide a myriad of resources for our families. Our students are being fed, staying healthy, and continuing to learn because of your hard work. I also want to thank our families for their support as they continue to deal with issues such as layoffs, scarcity of supplies, health concerns, and more, all while working with your children at home. This is a true partnership and we can't do it without you. In the coming weeks, things will continue to be difficult. Please continue to reach out to our administrators with your questions and concerns, and please know that your Board of Education stands behind you. We are all in this together. Thank you. And speaking of partnerships, we want to thank the town for allowing us to use the town hall here, the auditorium in the town hall, a great example of partnership, and we appreciate it. And I wanted the community to know that our, the board is in camera range and our clerk is here recording the minutes, but she's out of camera range. So I just wanted to make, just cover those housekeeping things. All right, may I have a motion in a second that the agenda of March 24th, 2020 be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Emily Belsa, board member, is with us on the telephone. Emily, what is your vote?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all in favor, none opposed. Thank you. All right, we have COVID-19 resolution. Whereas COVID-19 has resulted in the federal, state, and county governments declaring a state of emergency, and whereas the governor has ordered pursuant to Executive Order Number 202.4, the closure of schools statewide for a period of two weeks ending April 1st, 2020, and whereas the county executive had previously ordered the closure of all Monroe County schools on March 16th, 2020. Now therefore, the Board of Education resolves as follows. One, the Board of Education hereby declares the COVID-19 virus is an emergency for the school district. Two, the Penfield Central School District is closed for students beginning March 16th, 2020 until reopened by the governor and/or county executive. Number three, during the period of school closure for students, all district stakeholders shall establish plans to ensure the continuity of learning to the extent feasible and appropriate in accordance with consultation with the State Education Department, Department of Health, and the Office of Children and Family Services consistent with Executive Order 202.4. Number four, the Board of Education may be required to amend the school calendar to address these extraordinary circumstances and make up instructional days. Number five, the Board of Education meetings from March 16th, 2020 forward until further notice shall be closed to the public under Governor Executive Order 202.1. The school district shall make the meeting accessible to public participation through video streaming or by conference call at the time of the meeting, and the school district will record the Board of Education meeting and post the video, audio, or transcript on the district website. The superintendent of schools is authorized to follow the federal, state, and county orders and to take such action as necessary and proper to operate the school district during this time of emergency. May I have a motion in a second that the Board adopt the foregoing resolutions?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Emily, what is your vote?
Aye.
All right, all in favor and none opposed. Thank you. Resolution approving hourly pay. Whereas the novel Corona COVID-19 pandemic has resulted in the federal, state, and county governments declaring a state of emergency, and whereas the Monroe County Executive has ordered schools closed for student attendance beginning March 16th, 2020 due to the threat from the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas the governor pursuant to Executive Order Number 202.4 has closed schools statewide for a period of two weeks ending on April 1st, 2020, and whereas the Penfield Central School District, known as the School District, intends to provide alternative instruction and continue the operation of educational and related programs provided by the school district to the extent reasonable and consistent with direction from the State Education Department, Department of Health, Office of Children and Family Services, and federal, state, and local officials, and whereas the school district desires to pay hourly school district employees during the closure of the traditional school district operations due to the COVID-19 pandemic, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby declares the COVID-19 pandemic is an emergency for the school district. To the extent not already provided for in a collective bargaining agreement, hourly employees shall continue to be paid during the school district closure for students provided such employees are available for work and report to work when directed to do so. This is meant to make such employees whole for missed work due to the school closure and shall be consistent with such employees' regular compensation during normal school district operations. Depending on the length of school district closure, the superintendent of schools may extend the length of payment to reflect an extended school district closure. This resolution shall apply only for the specific and limited purpose of addressing the unique challenges presented by the outbreak of COVID-19. It shall not set any precedent or practice regarding any aspect of the resolution. This resolution shall take effect immediately. May I have a motion in a second that the Board adopt the foregoing resolution?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Emily on the phone?
Aye.
Thank you.
All in favor and none opposed. Thank you. All right, approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the agenda as amended to include approval of minutes of March 10, 2020 as submitted, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, acceptance of recommendation from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes as amended, request to approve the recommended bidders, Laow, Sporting Goods, Riddell, and Scholastic Sports Sales per RFB Number 20-06 Athletic Cloth Uniforms dated 3/11/2020, and approval of request to dispose of unserviceable textbooks. So moved. Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Emily?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor and none opposed. Thank you. Treasurer's Report. May I have a motion in a second that the Treasurer's Report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending January 31st, 2020 be approved? So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Emily?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor and none opposed. Thank you. All right, no special reports, and no visitors, and Levia is home. Dr. Putnam, student honors?
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to point out Catherine read a great statement, and as a reminder for the viewing audience, we don't have my whole administrative team here. Dr. Mark Sansucci, our Deputy Superintendent for Business and Finance, is on the phone, and he'll be here to report when we get to the budget portion of this board meeting. Barb Gregory, our HR, and Jim Pfeifer, our ASI, are both at home. They're not on the phone, but because they didn't have presentations this evening, I asked them to stay home. And Mark Elidge, our Vice President, is not here. He was unable to attend, and so he's not on the phone. Also point out that we are practicing social distancing, and you can tell if you see the wide shot, we're pretty far apart from each other, and we're going to continue to do that for the foreseeable future. So this evening, I do have some superintendent reports. I do have student staff honors I want to mention. I do have update on the COVID-19 emergency crisis, and then I will be turning it over to Dr. Mark Sansucci on the telephone for the 2020-2021 benefits, budget review, and also information on land purchase. I'll start with donations. The Penfield Sports Boosters have generously donated a new pitching mound, home plate, and bullpen weather covers for our fields. The items are valued at $2,681.96. We thank them greatly for this. These are really nice to haves, and the Sports Boosters are a great partner with our district in order to support things that our budget doesn't necessarily deem required, but nice to have, and so thank you to the Sports Boosters. I'll turn over to COVID-19 now and walk through a little of this. So as of right now, today's March 24th. As of March 24th, New York State has closed schools through March 31st. You'll hear in some of our propositions, we talked about April 1st. It's still under review on whether April 1st would be a day of closure or the first day back, and we're working closely with the governor's office to fully understand the executive orders as they go through. There are a lot of rumors, and there's a lot of social media conversations and in the regular media on how long our school closures will last, but I am one who will speak solely of facts, and so our facts are that New York State has closed schools through March 31st, possibly April 1st, and that is all we know right now. I don't have any secret information in terms of closure beyond that point. I will tell you that the exemption from the 180 required school days that the governor mentioned at a press conference last week is important. Schools in New York State do have to have students learning for 180 school days. If they don't, then we have to take in other days such as vacations or end of the school, going further into the end of June. And so right now, our school closures are exempt from 180. We close schools prior to the governor closing all New York State schools, but we did so under the guidance of our Monroe County Department of Health as well as the Monroe County Executive. So we are okay with that. So we can't open schools until we get the okay from the governor and the Monroe County Executive and the Monroe County Department of Health. So as of now, we are okay. We are exempt from the 180-day rule. If the governor and the Department of Health want to open up earlier than that, we would, especially the Department of Health, take their expertise on when to open. This is the question I probably get the most as a superintendent, is when will the closure end? When will we come back to school? I get that from parents, I get that from faculty and staff, and I get that from two very tired boys at my own house who want to come back to school. So the answer is right now, we don't know, and as soon as we do, we will be communicating with our community as quickly as possible. I want to talk a little bit about district priorities during these school closures. One thing that this board has talked about and the district believes in completely is the idea of the development of the whole student and social-emotional learning. If you've watched our meetings over the last two years, we've had a number of presentations and conversations around social-emotional learning and the development of the whole student. This board created and voted on a policy that has put into writing our belief on development of the whole student, and because of that, academics are critically important, but we also understand that the student's life is more than academics, and we want to make sure we're looking out for their well-being and their social-emotional health. So when we looked at these closures, that came fast, that people were talking about in the media but did not really become reality until just over a week ago, our first priority was feeding our students in need. We are required by New York State to feed our students in need, and it's something we take very seriously. We then wanted to make sure that we could provide technology to students in need. Penfield is a great district. We are not a one-to-one district. All of our students K-12 do not have a computer, and therefore, we wanted to work with families to make sure that if we are going to do distance learning via technology, we wanted to make sure that students had that device to be able to use. And then finally, really, we looked at providing distance learning through a continuity of education plan. If you see my slide, I have that in quotations because that is a term directly from New York State Education, and that all school districts had to put in a plan to get approved for their continuity of education. We also had to put in a plan that had to get approved for our, how we were feeding students, and we also had to put in a plan on how we were supporting childcare, especially for members of our community who may be first responders or working in hospitals, and making sure that they could still go to work and have childcare. And I'll talk about all of these a little bit more in detail now. Feeding our students, if, I put communication out, but I really just want to point out that meals are being distributed to families at the high school, PHS loading dock, in a drive-through fashion. Families can pull up, say how many meals they need for the students, and then that is brought to the car. Meals are served every weekday from 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM, and at that time, students receive a breakfast and a lunch that they can then warm up later in the day. Food service is preparing these meals, and then food service as well as staff volunteers are distributing the food to the cars. I also want to point out that everything we do here is about Team Penfield, and members of B&amp;G, our building grounds, are actually delivering some meals to families that do not have the ability to drive over and pick them up. That's going very well. We're handing out right now approximately 150 to 200 student meals a day, so that's a breakfast and a lunch. So when we hand out 150 student meals, that's actually 300 meals we're handing out each day. Providing technology to students in need. Soon as school closures came into play, then one of the next steps was to put out a technology needs survey. And as of today, right before I came over to this meeting, we've handed out approximately 350 devices, distributed those to families in need. Technology Services is monitoring a helpline, both telephone and email, and people who receive that computer have that information and will get that information in email as well. And we're also working to support families without internet. We do have families without high-speed internet, so a device is great, but if you can't connect to the internet, you can't do much with it, and you really can't do anything with it if it is a school laptop, because in order to log in through Microsoft 365 and even log into the computer, you've got to be connected to the internet. And so many families, it's really important to remember as we look at this COVID-19 emergency situation, is that we have many families with more than one child who has to share a device. So I'll talk a little bit more when we look at the instruction piece, but I do get, I have gotten some emails and phone calls of people wanting us to be basically a brick-and-mortar school but online, so have students log in at 7:00 in the morning and just be with teachers all day, and the reality is, we can't do that in this district. We do not have enough computers, we do not have enough families with high-speed internet, and families are sharing computers. So we're going to talk about a little bit later what we're doing for instruction, but I do want to address that because I think it's a great question. So as we talk about continuity of education, there are some FYIs. We service about 4,700 students K-12, that number, give or take, but around 4,700 students. I think it's important, if we're a district that talks about the development of the whole student and talking about social-emotional needs, is that we have to also be honest about the barriers to equity. Now, our rural and urban partners are really dealing with a much larger barrier to equity, but Penfield Central Schools deals with it as well. So some of those barriers to equity that we're working through is technology. I mentioned that. Not every student has a device. Not every student has their own personal device. There's high-speed internet issues that lag when you talk about online learning or video conferencing. We also have students with numerous special education needs. Our students with disabilities also have to be looked out for. So when we talk about new instruction, we also have to have a plan and look at how we're modifying and providing accommodations and supporting our students with disabilities. The same is true for our English language learners. We have a number of students and families in our community that English is their second language. When they're in school, they have somebody, an English language learner teacher, working with them daily to support their education. When we're trying to do this in a virtual world, that's pretty difficult, so we want to make sure that we have a plan in place, which we're continuing to try to overcome. We also have childcare. It's great to think that every child's at home with two parents there, supporting them and working with them on their education needs, but that's not a reality for everybody in Penfield. We have some students that all day long are still in childcare, and so trying to do academic work in that situation is pretty difficult. And there's a number of other barriers to equity I'm not going to share here, but these are the realities of the world we live in. And so I also want to point out that our teachers literally had one week to move from classroom instruction to distance learning. I commend our colleges, our SUNY program, that were able to do it seemingly overnight, but all of those universities and colleges already had a platform for online learning. I graduated with my master's, half of it done online through SUNY Albany, living in Rochester. And so moving everybody from a SUNY school to an online platform is a little bit less of a task because the platform's already built. Professors, on the other hand, had to learn how to do it if they never taught online before. But I just commend, I know it's not a perfect system every day, but our teachers, part of Team Penfield, are absolutely incredible on what they were able to build in a week and support their students from afar. So what does our continuity of education plan look like? Last week, believe it or not, was the first week of school closures. I say believe it or not because I feel like we've been closed for, I don't know, 12 months, because we've accomplished a lot, and the Board of Education, myself, our administrators, our teachers, every single member of Team Penfield, regardless of the job title, has been up late trying to figure out what this looks like in this new world we're in. So when we first rolled this out, we had, our Office of Instruction did incredible work and built a catalog of online resources that were shared. Teachers were told at that point that we were not doing new instruction yet, so they could provide resources, they could provide review information, and again, you know, if we're going to talk about being really dedicated to the development of the whole student, and we're going to talk about social-emotional as a goal in this district, then we've got to really walk the talk when it comes to these situations. So we highly encourage, through emails, through communication, to review information with your child and then take care of one another. I'm not kidding. My boys are doing laundry at home, they're loading the dishwasher, they're making their bed every day, we're going on walks, we're talking with each other, we're learning about each other, and we're really taking care of ourselves. As adults, the news, and the 24-hour news cycle can be absolutely overwhelming. Every one of our students, even our youngest patriots, are picking up on that anxiety and stress either because the news is on, or they're overhearing things, or they hear from their friends online. And so we really, I stand strongly that that first week was, let's take care of ourselves. In my time as an educator, we've closed school for four or five days due to snow, wind, and ice closings, and we all made it out okay. So week one was, take it easy. Week two, which is the week we're in right now, we have started new instruction. So teachers have been sharing learning activities and assignments with their students, and they're doing that in a number of ways. We don't have one single platform to use. So teachers are emailing, parents are students, depending on the age, they're putting information through Infinite Campus Messenger, they're building Microsoft 365 Teams where their students can go in and see the work and see the assignments and maybe see videos of lessons, and also share information so they can get feedback from their teachers during this time. This Friday, as we come up to this Friday and moving forward into next week and however long this goes, is that each Friday, teachers will be sharing learning activities and assignments for students the following week. So ideally, if you are a high school student with seven teachers, you should be receiving seven emails on Friday with the work they want you to work on the following week, day by day. We have some teachers who are already working and doing a daily check-in. So I know of a number of elementary school teachers who are going daily check-in at 10:00 AM. I'm not asking them to stop what they're doing. If it's working for their students and it's working for their parents, keep up the great work, but in order to provide some consistency and hopefully lessen the number of emails parents are getting and students are getting, our goal is to put everything out on Friday for the following week. And that'll happen this Friday, but I do know, both as a superintendent who gets lots of emails and from a parent, my students have work to do every day thanks to the teachers that are emailing their classes on what they have to do. It is not a perfect system. We were not built to be an online school only, but we're doing lots of great things. I'll talk about it a little bit further. So additional FYIs around our continuity of education plan. I have gotten a question from a number of people, so I wanted to address it. It's about making packets, paper packets, for students and just hand out paper packets once a week or, you know, a couple times a week. It's simply not feasible. I told you I'm going to talk factual. We have 4,700 students. To have somebody come in and make 4,700 packets, it's just not feasible, especially in the fact that although we, as a school district, are considered a local government, we can, we are essential, we do have people working, but we're not bringing in teachers and clerical and staff to run copies and then have to somehow deliver those copies to 4,700 students. It makes sense, but it's not feasible, and I wanted to address that openly. The other piece, and I think is important, is when we talk about synchronous and asynchronous online learning. So synchronous online learning is actually happening in our district in some areas, and that would be the teacher would utilize either Skype through Microsoft 365 or Zoom, which many people are using, and they would have everybody in their class login at 9:00 AM, and they could see each other via video and speak to each other. In some cases, that works. If the teacher knows that all the students have access to a personal device, if they can schedule it, that's wonderful, but it's not possible to say all of our teachers and all of our students will always have synchronous online learning because it doesn't work for every family, and it doesn't work for every student, and it doesn't work for every teacher. So we do have a lot of asynchronous online learning, where a teacher may post a video, and then students can open up Microsoft Teams, watch that video, watch that lesson, and then provide comments to get feedback from. So just a reminder that not every student has their own personal device, and not every family has high-speed internet. And the last bullet I want to mention is something that I just want to be open about and try to be honest and transparent. There is no plan that will be perfect for every student and every family. So on a regular basis, I'm meeting with the superintendents across Monroe County. We shared our plans, we review our plans, and I can tell you that while one parent might think another district's plan is perfect, I can tell you that other families don't like how that plan is working. And some people like our plan, and other people would like to see something different. And the reality is, we've got to work together, we have to be patient, and we have to continue to build this airplane while we're flying it, because that is what it feels like. We were not built for this, our schools were not built for this, and so again, I'm always going to find silver linings, and our teachers and our administrators, our entire Team Penfield group is working hard to make sure that students don't fall behind, that they get the work that they need, that they get feedback as they go through. And it's one of those great reminders that it does really take a village. We're going to have to work through this together. If you have questions, you can email the teacher. If you don't receive an email back, or you have other questions, you can email me directly, you can email the building principal, we're here to help you through this process. And so the reality I want to talk about, and this is tough as a superintendent because I really like having answers, that's just the reality, it's how I'm built, I like answering questions, and I like being able to say if I don't know the answer, and I tell our administrators and our teacher this all the time, if you don't know the answer, you simply say, that's a great question, let me get back to you. Well, the reality in COVID-19 right now is that we have more questions than we have answers to regarding the next steps due to these school closures. So some of the questions that I continue to have myself, and that we receive questions through email or phone calls, is what's going to happen with the spring athletic season? What's going to happen with spring performances in events that have been canceled or postponed? What's going to happen with field trips that we have planned through June, including the biggest one, our eighth-grade Washington DC trip? What about grading assignments during closure? Because right now, we're only offering feedback like most schools across the state. And what about graduation? And the answer to all those questions is, I don't have an answer for any of those questions yet, but we are talking- yet, but we are talking as superintendents across, we're working closely with the New York State Education Department, we're monitoring and having conversations with our Monroe County Executive and the Department of Health, and some of these are going to build. So as soon as we have answers, we will get answers out to the community. During these emergency situations, there really is that importance of trust and that importance of partnership. I want to be able to, as a superintendent, tell my board every answer, and I want to be able to tell the community every answer. Penfield School Board and the school district really prides itself on being transparent, sharing information openly. And the reality is, nobody is hiding anything, we simply don't have answers right now. If you have a question that I'm not, you think I'm not thinking of, please email me. I'll add it to the list if we don't have an answer, and I will promise that we'll get that information out. We're putting emails out to our community about every other day, and we'll continue to update them with any new information as it comes forward. Some other additional information is, I can't say it enough, please visit our coronavirus information page on our webpage. If you go to penfield.edu, under Quick Links on the right-hand side of the page, and now that I say that, it's actually on the left-hand side of the page, I apologize, but if you find Quick Links, just find the link that says COVID-19 Information. All of our previous and all future communication will be found at that site. Every email that comes out from me, every new piece of information we have, and information about childcare, if you're in need of childcare, where you can go for childcare, especially for our first responders, our doctors, our nurses, but anybody is available to take a look at what's being offered around our county for childcare. Information about the food service and breakfast and lunches is there, information about technology is there, all of our information about instructional plans and the continuity of education can be found there. And we continue to update that page. And we'll also continue to provide timely updates and information with our community. I have plenty of time for questions from the board, if they have any.
Board members? Okay, we'll get to Emily in just a minute in case she has any questions. I do, I have a question. I know at the beginning of this, you were in constant contact with County Executive Bello and Dr. Mendoza. Is that still taking place on a regular basis?
Yeah, so we were, before we closed and right after closures, we were in daily communication, especially with Dr. Mendoza, who is incredible. I am still in communication with Dr. Mendoza, I'm meeting with him tomorrow for further information. So yes, we still are in contact. It is not, to be fair and honest, we're not in daily contact, but our superintendents of BOSI's, and ours and BOSI's one is Dan White, and Dan White is in much more close contact. And really, it's because if you turn on the TV, you will see both Adam Bello and Dr. Mike Mendoza on TV almost every day, a couple times a day with their press conferences. So they are very, very busy. But if we have questions specifically about our community or schools, I am still amazed that they pick up their phone when we call it immediately, they text back when we text them. So the answer is yes, it's not every day any longer, but as we move forward, looking at how long school closures will go for, if they're going to go past March 31st or April 1st, they have always picked up the phone and have been very, very helpful.
Yeah, well, it makes sense that now that we're in some sort of a pattern, that you don't have to talk every day, but they're there for us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Can we ask Emily if she has any questions?
Sure. Emily, do you have any questions?
No, not at this point.
Okay. So, anyone else for this part?
No.
Lisa? No? Okay, Lisa?
I have a question. Originally, before the governor closed, I think there was some direction, and I might be, I may be misspeaking, but about that superintendents were going to kind of be gathering on Friday to discuss the next week.
Yeah.
So now the waters are a little muddy here with the governor's mandate. Do you know kind of what you're looking at going forward?
Sure. So yeah, our first communication out was exactly that, that we were going to close week to week and review on Friday to talk about the following week. That changed when the governor's executive order closed schools through the end of March. So right now, we still communicate, the superintendents are communicating on a regular basis, and as soon as we know something about if school closures are going to continue, we will get that information out immediately. But it's no longer, we're still meeting on Friday, but I don't foresee a communication on Friday because the last communication we put out about school closures did reference the governor's executive order that it would go through the end of March.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay. Everyone's good? Okay.
I appreciate that. We are, my analogy I continue to use is building that airplane while we fly it, and I just wanted to say that, as I mentioned, there is no perfect plan, but I would never want to be in any other district. Team Penfield is absolutely fantastic. We have so many staff members and community members who've reached out to say, "What can I do to help? What do you need?" We've got people handing out food, we've got volunteers who help with computer distribution, and they're not here, but you know, Barb Gregory in HR is trying, we've got to keep moving forward with hiring people and building our district for next year. So she's working on Skype interviews, and Jim Pfeifer is in here, but I just wanted to give him a shout-out as well because he's really taken that task of working closely with the Department of Technology for computer handout and supporting families' needs. Everybody is working around the clock, not always in their office because we're trying to work from home whenever we can, but really is amazing that during a crisis, true colors come out, and the true colors of Team Penfield has been, what can I do to help? What can I do to support kids? What can I do to be there for them? So I'm just thoroughly impressed, I'm really proud to lead this district during such a difficult time.
So before you move on, I just want to reiterate that the board is very appreciative of all of the work that everyone has done to coordinate this incredibly huge effort. And like you say, flying the plane, or building the plane while you're flying it, it would be better to fly the plane after it's built, of course, but this has been, it's been a magnificent effort, and the board is proud, and we're very happy to be able to, we know that you know we're here, but I feel very confident that we all agree that we're happy to just let you do what you need to do because we know Team Penfield's intact and you're all working together. We're very proud of the effort.
Now, just, you know, I turn that right back on the school board. The school board's absolutely incredible to work with. You know, the school board cares deeply about what's best for students, and so that, at the end of the day, is really helpful for our teachers who are on the front line. Our teachers are on the front line every day, trying to get great education to our students. And, you know, the world's upside down right now, and teachers just like students have a different level on the spectrum of where they are with trying to teach online. So some are really skilled and others are trying to learn new things. And what we've continued to say, and I'll continue to stand by, is this is not the time for teachers to try to throw out all the bells and whistles and learn everything. First, we've got to focus on what's essential. What's essential to know? How do we support students to stay on track? And what helps me, as a parent as well, is to know that this is not a Penfield Central School District. I'd feel differently if Penfield Central School District was the only district closed in the nation. This is a national issue, and as we move into next year, you know, we're not looking to hold students back, we're not looking to have students repeat grades, they're going to move on, and our teachers will be ready for them, knowing that this incoming grade next year was the grade that was at home due to the COVID-19 emergency closure. And we will work with those students to support them and get them well where they need to be and move forward. So, and again, I, it's an incredible team, incredible board, but parents out there, if you're listening, thank you for what you're doing, thank you for supporting your kids. And remember, it's okay to take a step back, it's okay to hug your kids, it's okay to say, "Let's just go for a walk today, let's do some learning today, let's do something creative today." Because in the grand scheme of what people are going to ask about 10 years from now, I guarantee you, your student will not remember every detail of what they learned during this school closure, but they are going to remember how their teachers made them feel, how their families made them feel, and I really, really think it's important. And I am not kidding when I tell you my students are doing, my students, my own children are learning how to do their own laundry, they're making their own lunches, they're really doing great work because we think those are, these are great life skills we don't have time for during the regular busy school year. So without all the soccer practice and robotics and everybody running around and my wife and I just being taxi drivers, we're really trying to dig in on saying, what can we do as a family that's going to be meaningful and helpful? And to me, that's critically important as much as school is, and so our students will be okay. This is something that across the nation, everybody's dealing with.
Yeah.
All right, so I will turn it over now to Dr. Sansoussi, who is on the line, and Dr. Sansoussi's going to talk about our 2020-2021 budget. And we'll start with the slide on district goals. Dr. Sansoussi?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We start every budget presentation with a discussion of district goals. The three goals that the board has long established, academic excellence, partnerships, and fiscal responsibility. I always try and point out as we put through this, the particular goal that's relevant to the evening's presentation. Tonight, we're going to talk about benefits, that portion of our overall budget. We're also going to talk about where we're at in the process, and I want to spend some time focusing on what next steps are going to be as we move towards our vote in May. So really, that conversation about partnerships, partnerships with the community, with our parents, who are helping us right now, who are the primary providers really, as we strive towards academic achievement and excellence and trying to do so in a fiscally responsible way, as we continue to move through an important budget process. So with that, I'd like to turn to the next slide, the budget calendar, the 2021 budget calendar. So we began, this is one of those lessons, I think, in how events overtake us and how some weeks seem longer than others. This has seemed like a very long week, I think, for all of us. But time has passed quickly for our budget. So we began in October, on October 8th. In November, the board adopted goals, assumptions, and guidelines. They set out guardrails for how we would progress through this process. They gave us targets to hit, and we've been working now for six months on using those guardrails as our guidance. During January, the governor gave his state-of-the-state message, and during that, he laid out his vision of what was going to happen, what his state budget would look like, and he later, in fact, did transmit that proposed state budget to the legislature, who has it now. All of that's going to be relevant as we move into this conversation because, as I think we all know, much has changed. The next slide shows January, the January, February board meetings where we looked at components of the budget, the instructional program, capital, and so on. We then moved, on the next slide, into tonight's meeting. So at the last meeting, we reviewed the BOSI's budget, and tonight, our proposed budget, what we're looking at is primarily the benefits portion of the budget. On the next slide, in this pie, you can see that that composes a fairly significant portion of our budget, about 25%. That shouldn't be a surprise to anyone who's paid attention to my previous presentations. All of those presentations are primarily about people. Schools are about people, teachers in front of kids in classrooms, the Buildings and Grounds Department, the Transportation Department, Administration, all working in schools towards that goal of educating the whole student. Those, looked at the salaries for those positions as we moved along, but we look at benefits, undistributed, we look at benefits all at once. On the next slide, you can see what those components of the budget look like. Tonight, we'll fill in that final bar. On the next slide, the 2021 total budget for health and retirement is about $26 million. That's up $749,000 or 3% from the previous year. On the next slide, there's some information about the teachers' retirement system. I'm showing that here because for this year, it and health insurance are primary drivers of our increase. The question is, of course, what's driving that 3% increase? And here you can see, this slide shows the average rate of contribution by decade from year to year. So far, for this decade, our average amount is 9.2%. The teacher retirement system rate for this year has been lower because of stock market performance, but during, for this cycle, increased by about 7%. So that's, that particular benefit is a significant portion of our budget, and it's being driven upwards. On the next slide, you can see the details of that. So here are the various components of the benefits for our employees. 5.3% or about $200,000 is teachers' retirement, and health insurance is increasing by about 3.2% or about a half million dollars. So overall, there's an underlying, as the board knows, 8.5% increase there, but our overall budget depends on changes in mix, on folks who take what plans, on the numbers of folks in plans and so forth. So overall, our budget, while each plan cost is increasing by about 8%, our budget overall isn't quite that high. And overall, excuse me, and overall, our budget in total increases by 3% for the components that we're looking at here, for the benefits portion of the budget. On the next slide, you can see, we've now filled in the whole budget. We now know where we're at with regard to the entire budget. And that is, on finally, the tentative budget slide, $103 million, a $2.5 million increase or 2.6%. So if nothing else changes as we move forward, that's where we, that's a budget that we would expect to present to our public in May. However, I think we all know that that's only half of the story, that's only half of the budget. And on our next slide, we see the other half of the budget. So the majority of our, of our, of our school's budget is supported by the real property tax. 65% of our budget is supported by taxes. 7% by everything else we talk about, everything from interest earnings, appropriated fund balance, lost book fees, draws from reserves, et cetera. And 28% of the budget is state aid. State aid, at this point, is very much a live question. So on the next slide, you see our remaining schedule. Tonight, we know where we're at with regard to the expenditure side of the budget. On April 1st, the board, or I'm sorry, the state is scheduled to adopt a state budget. The deadline for the state budget, their state fiscal year, begins on April 1st, and this governor, Governor Cuomo, has a, has an unblemished record, really, of adopting, of bringing a state budget to closure on time. That's important because of that, the significant impact that those state aid revenues have to our, have on our budget. On the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about tax cap because that, we know where we're at with regard to revenue for that. Overall, the allowable levy growth factor is 1.81%. That's one of the components. It was based on inflation. It is based on inflation, the lesser of 2% or the real rate of inflation over the previous year, whichever is less. Inflation was low, and so at 1.81%, that's the factor we would use, that's the amount absent any other factors that the levy could be expected to grow. But there are other factors. On the next slide, we see one of those, the tax-based growth factor. In our community, we had growth of real property, of bricks and mortar, of new construction, not a reassessment, but of stuff in the community, new taxable property of just under 1%, 0.82%. That's part of that tax cap formula as well. And also part of it is we're allowed to use any funds carried over from the previous year, any available cap space, a certain amount of it, but some of the cap space from the previous year that we didn't use. Here's what that formula looks like, sort of a simplified version of that formula, and you can see that when we begin with last year's levy, work through those components, look at pilots, the changes in pilots year over year, they're a part of this formula as well. as well, that tax-based growth factor that we mentioned, as well as the allowable levy growth factor, all this gets cooked together into what everyone knows as the tax levy limit, the tax cap, if you will. And that, for us, for next year, our 2%, the result of that quote-unquote 2% tax cap for us in the next year is 2.66%. Our levy, not rate, but our levy cannot increase by more than 2.66% without a supermajority vote. So we know something, if you look on the next slide, we know something about our revenue picture. We know that without an override vote, we can't go past that 2.66%. But there's much that we don't know, and that's on this next slide, budget considerations. We need to, we need to, think the next piece of our budget puzzle, that 28%, is in right now in the hands of the state legislature. And there's much going on. We began this conversation, we began tonight's meeting with a discussion of how COVID, the COVID virus has impacted learning of our students. You know, my kids are at home, my wife's home with them right now. Our lives have been disrupted, and the economy of the state has been disrupted as well. The governor requested that the comptroller do an analysis of his budget, of the budget that he had presented to the legislature back in January, and estimate how much revenues would be impacted based on the current state of the economy. The comptroller's answer, his estimate, was that revenues would run $4 to $7 billion less than what the governor had anticipated in his plan. If you'll remember, the governor entered this year's budget cycle already with a deficit on the books, a deficit associated with Medicaid, with increasing costs of Medicaid. And part of that plan was that the governor established a Medicaid redesign team that would look at the costs of Medicaid, look at the drivers of Medicaid, and make recommendations as to how $2.5 billion could be reduced from the cost of that program. So that's important to us. The single, the two single largest programs in the state budget are aid to schools, about 29% or $30 billion of the state budget is composed of state aid to schools, and Medicaid. Medicaid, second, about 22% of the state budget supports Medicaid. That was already targeted for reductions. And the governor's proposing to go forward with those. The Medicaid redesign team has released its, has released its findings. I think we have to believe, though, that it's going to be somewhat difficult for the legislature to undertake Medicaid reductions in the midst of a healthcare crisis. That's going to be challenging, I think. So I think that it's fair to say that for the governor to be able to address the issues around his state budget, if he intends to offer a balanced budget, that he cannot do so without freezing or reducing school aid. The question is going to be how he does that. The structure of how budget works in New York State is the governor presents a budget, which the state legislature then has the authority to adopt or to not adopt. They can not amend it, they can't change it. They can propose additions to it, and they can negotiate changes to it. But the governor has tremendous power. Once that, once that budget's presented, which it has been, though, the governor, the shoe's a little bit on the other foot, I think, when the governor wants to reduce it. He'll have to negotiate those changes. They'll have to come to some agreement for him to submit a revised budget. I don't know if there's time left or capacity in this system for that to happen. If you think about it, there's an awful lot going on. We see the governor on the TV every day as he manages through this crisis. There could be very little capacity for us to, for the state, to be able to do anything rational in terms of addressing state aid. They'll have to, though, by April 1st. So I think what we need to be prepared for is a budget that's adopted with the caveat that changes, future changes, will be made. We've faced, as schools, mid-year cuts before. I think it's important to realize, as we do our planning, that that's very much a real possibility. So we'll be working through this. We're looking back at our budget with an eye towards what changes might need to be made. We're going to wait on that April 1st deadline. The board needs to adopt its budget at the next board meeting, so at the April 21st board meeting, we'll need to adopt. So that gives us just about a month, really, for us to be able to begin planning, begin changed planning, and begin to think about how we move forward in what could be a very difficult school year. There's discussion about delaying that vote. There's discussion about what might change. But as of right now, we don't know what that could be. We don't know what that looks like, or if that's even going to come to pass. So we need to continue our planning process. We have a long history of fiscal responsibility in Penfield, and I think we just need to be careful, to be thoughtful about the changes that we recommend, and to be cognizant of our environment as we move forward. On the next slide, I'll show you the propositions that we'll be facing. We've already adopted, and later in your agenda, we will be re-adopting some changes to our budget. So you will see on the next slide that we are, that the propositions will be a general fund budget. We will adopt the general fund budget for the 2021 school year. We're requesting approval of bus purchase as part of our ongoing bus purchase replacement plan. We replace a portion of our buses every year so that we don't ever face a time when we have to replace them all, all at once. And then finally, on our last slide, just a reminder to everyone, that May 5th will be, is as of today, our deadline. So that's the budget hearing, the last formal presentation of the budget in a particular fashion. And then on May 19th, the budget vote and election at the high school from 6:00 to 9:00 a.m. That, of course, pending resolution of the current situation. So that's the presentation. Next slide is questions. Are there any questions that I could answer?
Board members?
I had a question.
Calvin?
Okay, Mark. I hope you're doing well at home. So what I think I heard is that you're going to be looking at ways to possibly trim the budget in view of this Corona situation? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we don't know where we're at yet. I think we need to be prepared to begin thinking about that. Certainly, the amount of time that we have left over between now and an end budget doesn't allow for lots of rational choice. And normally, in a budget process, we would be, you know, working our way through and making decisions and making choices as we move. We're going to have very limited time in this case. But I think we need to be prepared to consider all aspects of our budget as we move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Emily, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. The next slide has to do with an ongoing project that we've had in the works for quite some time. And I mentioned at the last board meeting that we would be bringing forth some information on a potential land purchase. I need to bring the board up to speed with that tonight. And also, as part of our ongoing planning, talk about a potential 2021 capital project. So we've been moving in this direction for some time, and we really do need to keep this ball rolling if we are going to make our deadlines as we move along. On the next slide, I'd like to detail for the board and for the public the potential land purchase that we will be considering at the next board meeting. So in the past, in a past vote that was canceled, we had considered purchase of a portion of this property on 1364 Jackson Road. As it turned out, the portion of the property that we were looking at wasn't suitable. It didn't perk in terms of septic tank or septic usage. So we canceled that vote and moved on. We've renegotiated. We've come to an agreement with the landowner for the purchase of 40.1 of the 47-acre parcel. So you can see in light green on this slide, at the corner of Plank and Jackson Road, the Berry Turkey Farm is the property that we are proposing to purchase. It's, as I say, 40.1 acres at a price per acre of $20,000. So that's a total purchase price of $802,000. On the next slide, I just want to remind the board what our initial purpose for that property was and what our continuing purpose would be. So initially packaged with the ongoing elementary additions, we had a transportation and buildings and grounds facility. We're proposing to continue with that project. Essentially, that scope of work is a new facility moving off of 5 Mile Line Road and to this site for transportation and buildings and grounds. We'd renovate the existing bus garage to be a network operation center for IT systems. But we would also maintain a portion of the bus garage there as a bus wash, and we would also plan on rooting some buses out of there. So we would really, because of proximity and routes, we would primarily, our primary, primary, I'm sorry, operation would be on Plank Road, but we would continue to use the 5 Mile Line site for some of our operations. And then we would also propose to renovate the current IT offices at the high school back to classrooms. The other part of this project initially was the, as you know, the elementary additions. We moved forward with that, and that's now underway. So we would be looking to pair this, to, as part of this project, do some necessary renovations, building condition survey items. So these are sort of that list of repairs, renovations, items that need to be accomplished when you own a property as large and complex as our building. On the next slide, I detail some of those items. So, for example, window replacement at Harris Hill, cabinets and countertops that are worn and dilaminating at Cobble's and Indian Landing, toilet room renovations at the high school in Cobble, upgrade of original vintage electrical panels and so forth. We will be working through, we have a building, an existing building condition survey that contains quite a broad number of items that could be included. We're working our way through the process right now to determine what makes the most sense, how we should put that project together. But we do want to begin, we need to keep going. We need to keep considering this because of the long lead times associated with any kind of this work, any kind of work of this nature. So I wanted tonight to lay out what that timeline would look like. So at the next board meeting on April 21st, we would ask the board to approve the purchase contract. You have in your packet tonight a copy of the offer. We'll have about a month to consider that, and then the board needs to approve it. That offer is contingent on board approval, and then subsequently, the public has to approve it as part of this process. So there'll be a public vote on the approval. At the same time, and as part of, the capital project that would create the facility. So that means that at that same meeting, we begin to kick off all of the necessary legal requirements, the seeker requirements, for us to get to that, to get to that vote. So the board has adopted at the same meeting a resolution of intent to be lead agency, and we would begin the groundwork. We would issue contracts for necessary consultant contracts, traffic studies, environmental reviews, and so on of the property. In June, enough time would elapse, and the board would be able to adopt a resolution declaring themselves as lead agency for the purpose of seeker. And at that time, we should consider scheduling a public information meeting for after the summer, for beginning, the mid to the end of the month in September, after we come back to school. In September, we'd have that public information meeting, discuss what we learned at that in October. And on the next slide, continue with our conversations. We need to finalize scope at the November 3rd board meeting. That is, say, this is finally, after all this consideration and conversation and input from our community, what we're going to put up for vote. The board would review and adopt a seeker declaration at the November meeting and then be able to schedule a vote. So that vote at its earliest would have to be in February at a date we would determine. So the reason we're having the conversation tonight is because, obviously, we have a long lead time, and there's, you know, we need to touch the bases as we move along. So that's the schedule. On the next slide are some next steps. So we'll need to be able to conduct the traffic study, do the necessary work along the way. We'll be refining those conceptual designs. So we don't want to assume that the plan that we had for the original site is going to work perfectly on the slightly revised site. So we'll want to revisit that, refine, make sure that everything still makes sense. We'll want to look at that building condition scope, make sure of what we're offering, that it makes sense, and along the way, make sure that our financial plan can accommodate what it is that we're proposing. So much to be done. We intend that the facilities committee, the board's facilities committee, will be reviewing, guiding that process, and reporting back as we move along. And certainly, I intend to be making future presentations to the board, talking about what we would be doing and where we are going as we move along. So that's where we're at with regard to land purchase and capital project planning. Are there any questions?
Board members?
I had a question.
Calvin?
So the question that I've had right along is, have we considered the tax efficiency of renovating the existing bus facility? I've never really seen the opposing idea there compared to buying new land and building new.
Yes, we've looked at that a number of times. The primary problem with the existing facility is one of space. So the, it's really one of acreage. Could we probably tear down and renovate the vintage bus garage on 5 Mile Line Road? We could. But what we can't do, that facility would necessarily grow, and it's already too crowded there. So essentially, we've simply outgrown that site. And that's the challenge that we face. So while certainly, if we had unlimited space on that facility, you know, replacing a bus garage there, you'd avoid the cost of purchase. Of course, you would. But there's really no way to create more space on that site. So this is the next best solution. It has some other advantages. Much of our traffic on 5 Mile Line Road, which certainly, there will still be some. The high school has been moving off of 5 Mile Line Road. We'll need to get buses in and out of there. But it will move the elementary, middle school traffic off, which should be a boon, I think, to the public. So there's always positives and negatives of any plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Emily, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay. Okay, Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes superintendent reports for this evening.
Thank you. Dr. Putnam. Okay. Board members, we're on item 6, as we have nothing for facilities. Board members, we're on item six, as we have nothing for facilities. Notice of annual meeting, budget vote, and election. The district's notice of annual meeting, budget vote, and election was approved at our March 10th board meeting. Since that date, the state education department passed a new regulation requiring military absentee ballots. There have been no other new regulations to date. I will now read the military ballot information for the public. Military ballots. That military voters who are qualified voters of the school district may apply for a military ballot in accordance with Section 2018-D of the education law. Applications for military ballots are available from the district clerk on or after April 3rd, 2020, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, except holidays, from the district clerk in person or by calling 585-249-5702. Military voters may designate a preference to receive the military ballot application by mail, fax, simile transmission, or electronic mail. Completed original military ballot applications must be delivered to the district clerk by mail or in person and received by the district clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. Eastern Daylight Time on Thursday, April 23rd, 2020. The district clerk will transmit military ballots in accordance with each military voter's designated transmission preference on or before Friday, April 24th, 2020. As part of the military ballot application, military voters may designate a preference to receive the military ballot by mail, fax, simile transmission, or electronic mail. Completed original military ballots must be delivered to the district clerk by mail or in person and received by the district clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. Eastern Daylight Time on Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. That a list of persons to whom military ballots are issued will be available for inspection to qualified voters of the district in the office of the district clerk on and after May 12th, 2020, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, except holidays prior to the day set for the annual election. Any qualified voter present in the polling place may object to the voting of the ballot upon appropriate grounds for making his or her challenge and the reasons therefore known to the inspector of election before the close of the polls. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the notice of annual meeting, budget vote, and election as revised?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, didn't see. Emily?
Aye.
Okay. All approved, thank you. Background information for board members. A change involving a requirement for school districts to allow absentee military voters to vote by military ballot was adopted by the Board of Regents as an emergency regulation effective March 3rd, 2020. However, the state education department's initial notice to school superintendents indicated that these regulations were effective on July 29th, 2020, and therefore, wouldn't apply until next year's budget vote. A corrected clarifying notice was sent to districts on March 11th, 2020, informing them that the emergency regulations are indeed currently in effect now and must be included in our legal notice. Renewal of contract with Delphi Rise. The district has contracted with Delphi Rise for the provision of substance abuse counselors for many years. For the 2018-2019 school year, the contract provided one counselor at the high school, a .6 counselor at Bay Trail, and one counselor split between the four elementary schools, a total of 2.6 FTE. In the 2019-2020, in school year, excuse me, in the 2019-20 school year, the counselor at Bay Trail, okay, will be increased to 1.0 FTE. The district would like to maintain the 2019-2020 level of Delphi counselors for the 2020-21 school year. Accordingly, the attached contract provides for 3.0 substance abuse counselors with one counselor located at the high school, one located at Bay Trail, and one split between the four elementary schools. The contract is recommended for approval. Resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to finalize contract terms and enter into a contract for services with Delphi Rise Services for the 2020-2021 school year at a cost of $136,767. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Emily?
Aye.
All in favor, none opposed, thank you. All right. We have our draft schedule of meetings. Under President's remarks, if you've taken a look at the draft schedule for next year, which is kind of hard to believe, I guess things just do move along, don't they? Regardless of pandemics or any kind of crisis, right? Okay, so there we have it. We can look that over, and then we'll move on. No unfinished business under new business, unless we have any questions about the schedule there? No?
If you have questions or concerns, you can let the board clerk know between now and the next board meeting. It's a draft right now, and I think it gets approved next meeting.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Appointment of claims auditor. Due to the current health crisis, many staff are working from home or considered nonessential to comply with social distancing. This includes current staff that perform the duties of claims auditor. Christine Schelfel will perform the duties of claims auditor in their absence. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education appoints Christine Schelfel to perform the duties of the claims officer?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Okay, I didn't see. Barb, you raised your hand, right? Well, I can't, normally, because I have to look to the right, and then you, okay. Emily?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, thank you. Oh, we're at item 10. That's adjournment. Okay, if there's being no other further business.
So moved.
Okay, well, hold on a second. I have to get the time here. Where is it? I don't even have the time.
8:23.
8:23, all right. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education adjourn at 8:23 p.m.?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Emily?
Aye.
All right, none opposed, thank you.
Thank you.